All right, we'll go ahead and get started here. All right, thanks for coming away. We'll call the meeting to order and start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Okay, start with the appropriate agenda. Any additions or corrections, Paul?
No, I have nothing.
Ryan, Mel?
Okay, I've got a few here. We're gonna add A to I pay request number two for the 16th Street Roundabout. G1 old business update on 15 7th Street Northwest. Add H3 the Sinwell lot split. And I'm gonna move from correspondence, the commendation of Gerald Reynolds from Marco Island Police Department to the mayor's report. Now entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Thanks Ryan, do have a second.
Second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Consent agenda, any questions for administration on consent agenda? You're not entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do have a second.
Second.
Thanks Ryan, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Visitors, I don't have any, I've said we don't have any visitors, mayor's report. I wanted to move, because we do have a closed session and people tend to leave after that. The commendation of Gerald Reynolds from the Marco Island Police Department, him and his wife on vacation and they were trying to help a gentleman that was in need and we got a really nice letter from them that's in your packet, but just wanted to, I know the police chief's not here, I was gonna say, just if you see him, tell him thank him, it was a great way to represent himself, family, the community, and the skills that they have for that, so like to thank him for his service on that. Don't have any cards for public comment, so public hearing nuisance ordinance with the vermin.
Something to address this team?
Yeah.
Including your packet, you're familiar with council, we've discussed this before, just a small change to the code. So, in many counties, the public health covers the communities, in Dodge County, they advise us they're not going to, so that's fine. We'll, we need to add into our code though, to specifically address the vermin concern. For example, we've already, you had a house that had rats, that sort of thing, so as I said, we discussed this before, this is just your red line copy for that, for that change.
So the item seen in red was just basically lifted and dropped in from the county's ordinance, or?
It was from a different city's, you know, write-up.
Any questions on that before we open up the public hearing?
And I can just read the section, so we will just be adding section two, which is red there. In the accumulations harboring vermin, accumulations in the open of discarded used machinery, household appliances, automobile by zone material in a manner conducive to the harboring of rats, mice, snakes, vermin of any kind, and the rank growth of vegetable vegetation among the items. So accumulate in a manner creating fire health or safety hazards from such accumulation are hereby declared to be a nuisance and dangerous to the health, safety, and good order of the city, and then number three would be renumbered, so that it wouldn't affect anything, so.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing regarding the nuisance ordinance. If anybody has anything they'd like to comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and share your opinion. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. We take an action tonight, okay. With that, any other discussion from the council? I think this addresses what the issue that we had had, that we thought the county was gonna take care of, so entertain a motion to approve.
I'd make that motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Thanks Ryan, all in favor, state aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Onto the second public hearing moratorium on cannabis. Tim, you just wanna give a background on that. We're kinda getting stuck by the state passing this, but they're not gonna be approving anything until 2024 anyway.
So, this is a similar ordinance to what we looked at last time, it would be a temporary ordinance, would apply for the time period that's kinda set. More information's been coming out about this as well over the last, you know, month or so really, as the state kinda rolls out what they're looking at. Basically what their, the expectation is that the state will actually start issuing licenses in January of '25. So, while I'd like to have a public hearing tonight, I don't necessarily know that we need to adopt the ordinance, because there would not be any licenses issued until then. And so, I would like us to be prepared if we needed to in the future, so we'll have the public hearing, it'll be done, we don't necessarily need to have another public hearing about it. But I think that in the meantime, in that 18 months, I'm expecting that staff will be able to come up guidelines that will allow us to govern this. And some of them are relatively straightforward, you know, the, we're not allowed to not have a location, can't absolutely stop it. We can restrict the number, every 12,500 people, there's one. So technically speaking, in Dodge County, they would only be required to allow one. But I don't know what the county's expectation, or if they've been talking about it, so we'll have to see what they're, what they're planning for the non-city limits areas of the community, but I think, as planning staff, like I said, over that next period of time, I think we'll be able to come up with some guidelines. And then, the state will actually be issuing the licenses, so, you know, I'm not sure how that'll work exactly, because they haven't told us yet, they don't have this Department of Cannabis governance made yet, so we don't even know exactly like what the, you know, what our tobacco license is, like for example, we issue the license, but then information gets, will get shared with the state, same thing with liquor licenses, so I imagine it'll be along the lines of those liquor licenses, we'll, we'll issue them, and then the department, that's at the state, will clear them in essence, or they'll issue the license and we'll kind of rubber stamp what they issue, but I don't know that for sure. One thing I do wanna highlight is that they, they have authorized CBD laced drinks. I know that Kathy, who, you know, I think she's already started looking at serving those. In addition, they, or there's a specific part of the code that does, I think it was maybe a little bit of a joke in our last meeting, but it would allow for a municipal dispensary as well, so if the council wants to consider that, it's something we can talk about over the next, you know, six, seven, eight years.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Any comments or questions before we open the public hearing? Tim, can you restate what you said, when the state's gonna be ready to actually issue licenses?
What we're being told is January of 2025.
Okay, so does that mean we kind of effectively have a moratorium until then?
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, I think we should have a public hearing tonight, but I don't think we necessarily have to adopt this moratorium draft. Because I think that in that meantime, I'm expecting us to be able to come up with language that should allow for us to have the, hopefully the governance the council's comfortable with before that date.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Okay, I'll open the public hearing regarding the cannabis issue. If you have anything else to share, just come on up to the podium, state your name and address, and share your opinion. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. There'll be a lot more on this in the next 18 months as the state gets their stuff together, and I think they caused a pretty big panic that we're gonna have to deal with it right away, and then now it's gonna be a year and a half, so. Welcome to Minnesota. Community report, planning commission rezoning of the Koi Borgstrom House and Shop properties.
And all you know comes up here, basically what we're looking at tonight, and planning commission reviewed this on Monday night, and they give more deposit recognition. We have two properties or two parcels, we're looking at rezoning those from residential to residential commercial, the RC zoning. It's in a transition zone along Highway 34, kind of as you go east out of town. And the planning commission members, of course, can speak for themselves, but I think the, the general idea was that it was, was a, wouldn't be a negative change, so Ian, go ahead if you wanna address it some more.
We're going from commercial though.
Yeah, they're actually C2 general commercial.
Yeah, they're going into RSC though, so they'd be residential.
Yeah. That's right. So one of the parcels is his house, which would be a non-conforming use in a general commercial district. And so, the second parcel, which is just the southwest house, was the former site of his shop. So what he wants to do is just add another residential use there, and so by rezoning to residential commercial, we would correct for that non-conforming use and also allow for that new residential use on the second parcel.
Okay. Any questions for Ian? Okay, you guys, planning commission?
Yeah.
Makes sense to me, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do have a second.
Second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thanks Ian. Thanks Gwaii.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Onto zoning amendment for Reagan Outdoor Advertising.
Yep, so this is actually a city-owned parcel, it's in the south, southwest part of town, kinda by the cemetery there, just south of Highway 14. Undeveloped parcel right now, and what Reagan Outdoor would like to do is lease that parcel with the intention of constructing and maintaining a billboard, an advertising billboard on that parcel. So right now it's zoned DH Development Holding, and now that we're bringing a new use in, we have to rezone it. And so, what's the recommendation there, it is C3 Highway Commercial, which allows for billboards that would type. So it's right on the edges of City, and there's, so there's nothing really around over there in that area. There's only one other parcel that's adjoining to this parcel, and it's also zoned DH, so various minimal impacts, I would say, to the surrounding area by adding a billboard.
Okay.
Members of planning and zoning were, had one concern, that they wanted to make sure the lease was approved before we would allow the rezone. And the other was whether the sign was electronic or standard billboard and where it would be located. That was gonna be, they kinda left it to staff to decide where it went, but.
Yeah, so I mean, I think the recommendation was to, I think that what we're looking at tonight would also be approval of the rezone pending leases. The city attorney's working on those, we've touched on these with the folks from Reagan, and it's, you know, they don't wanna give too much, but I think the city attorney is holding their feet to the fire, which is good, because it's a long-term commitment with the lease. And that lease would come to council before we would actually approve it as well, so you'd have a chance to review that. But the, yeah, the zoning would be pending that approval, absolutely.
What term lease are they looking for, duration wise?
Maybe you wanna talk about it a little?
If you can.
The one, I believe there's one billboard that already exists, they're asking for a 25-year lease on that, they're asking for 30 years on the parcel that they would be building a new billboard on. If I'm right?
I think that's right, yep.
I think we are two years into the 30-year lease already that they're asking for.
That's a long time.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, my understanding of it, and I'm not, because the lease allows, but because their investment terms of the new lease, that's why they're looking to kinda recoup that over that period of time, so.
But do you have anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'd make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Thanks Paul, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, thank you. The third one there, the conditional use permit for the fence. Is that Ian?
This is at the Fisher Paradise household at 505 10th Street Northeast, and basically what they'd like to do is construct a chain link fence within three feet of their property lines, that would be the east, north, and west property lines. The applicant stated that each of the property owners have already, they've had discussions with those property owners, and each of them have said okay to the fence there. So, no issues there, I would say. With that, there's just two conditions that you get that acknowledgement on paper with those access use and agreements, and then second acknowledgement that there's utility use on there, and then if it ever has to be utilized, then they acknowledge that.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions from non-planning and zoning? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, thanks planning and zoning for all you did on those. Old business update on 15 7th Street Northwest.
Yep, so the council will recall that we discussed this property before, earlier this spring. Lots of items accumulated on that property there, and after we had sent the letter the first time around, they did make some efforts to cleaning up that site. However, since then, we're on track towards getting back to how it was originally before we had sent the letter. So, today I did send a second letter, just reminding them that they have two weeks I gave them until the next council meeting to clean up the site and mow the lawn now, because that was an issue as well, so. That's that, and while I was there, I did speak with the neighbor who reported that there was an incident involving a sick raccoon at that property, and the police department was contacted, and I can turn all this to the police department. Just so you're aware.
Did they dispose of the sick raccoon?
The raccoon was dispatched.
Thank you. I mean, Ian, the issue is, I mean, part of it is, we've got these folks who are using that sand volleyball court a lot more too. I mean, I, every night I've been up there, I don't know if it's the high school girls or who it is, but there's, there's groups of the, you know, it's a female thing, I mean, it's right there. And unfortunately, I think it may be worse than, I've never seen it before, I mean, it's certainly spread out more. So, and because they put their tarp up, they put up their, which is fine, which is good, if they could keep it all in there, I mean, not a big deal, but it just continues to sprawl out further and further, so, I don't know. But hopefully they'll clean it up. Thanks Ian.
Okay, thanks Ian. New business, number one, good brewing request, H1. So we've got a request.
Uh, yeah, so Mr. Stroh here is requesting to expand his liquor license to allow for a patio where he could serve alcoholic beverages on, because his current liquor license is only limited to what's inside his building.
And we've got similar, the Legion requested that a few years ago, so that we just need to be consistent with whatever we did there. So whatever that, whatever we did with that should just be applied here.
Yeah, and that's what we're basically looking at, would be to include the entire patio area in addition. So if you recall, like on the west side of the Legion, they took part of their parking lot and they kind of, sort of fenced it in to a certain extent, put tables out. So, yeah, similar thing here, just an amendment to his liquor license that would encompass that.
Okay.
One spot on the northeast driveway, you'll, on the second picture, you'll see there's three parking stalls added in there. But according to planning zoning, there can only be two spots there.
Yeah, and that's because they're essentially, you would be backing out into the highway there. And so our code only allows for two parking spaces where you can back out directly into the street like that. And Mr. Stroh did supply a permit from the county, because part of the parking area that he's expanding would be in the county right-of-way there. And I did confirm with the county engineer that they would be allowed to pave those parking areas within the county right-of-way as is required in our laws.
Okay, perfect.
Two things, this is an open conversation here. The trail that we currently have by Lions Park that goes up to Sunset Trail does end there at, is that second there?
Corner of Second and 34, yeah, on the west side.
Yeah, Second, 34, and when the county engineer showed to me, he did ask if there was a planned trail to connect that to the new roundabout, because that does have some better pedestrian and bike facilities on it, so. That would be like a, you know, good connection to make, would potentially be there. I think our comp plan actually shows it going up Mast Creek by Plaza 57 and continuing on the creek, and how viable it is with the kind of the full build-out. You know, it's gonna be pretty tough to do that, but I think that's something to keep in mind, and that that affects his parking. And then the other thing we talked about was on 34, there's currently parking. Along 34, we talked about converting that potentially into bike lanes at our planning meeting in March there. And that was one thing I'm waiting for the county engineer to hear, his schedule on doing some resurfacing on 34, maybe integrating or having the discussion with the public on converting that parking to bike lanes on each side of 34, which one of the advantages we had, when we looked at that, was it was really underutilized, there's really no parking from the intersection of 57, 34, all the way up to the Sunset Trails, we thought that was kind of an easy project to integrate. I don't know, Scott, how much parking do you expect on 34, is it gonna be, is it a lot, once we're done with construction here?
We get quite a lot of street parking on there, yes.
That might be something we gotta consider as a council of, you know, what do we do, because that could be a hindrance to the business.
Well, I know when Scott met with us on Monday night, he indicated that, you know, he thought that the trail extension could be a real positive to his business. So, I think at some point in time, that would be, you know, we would have to delineate exactly. I know you mentioned with the roundabout, those trail kind of wings are gonna kind of come off of the roundabout a bit, so just one thing to think about, yeah.
Yeah, so that connection, that's an off-road trail, right, which is what we have now, that's kind of one option. Another option was to continue the, the bike lanes through that corridor. I mean, we could, and the real connection that we were looking for was Lions Park up the Sunset Trail, we have a gap in there, and people use this walk in the road now. Relatively newer road, we're probably not narrowing that road up and putting an off, off-trail system in, just due to the new, newness of the road, and it's in good shape. So we did look at that as an option, have 10-foot on each side and eliminate parking there, because really it's not utilized. From Sunset Trail, which is what, eighth down to Lions Park, and the question's, well, how do, do we just continue it right to the roundabout? Again, because it's, was generally not utilized until we have a business here that seems to be utilizing, so I think that's something we have to discuss if we move something forward, so. It seemed like a real easy fit when, before this kind of use came in here. And now we're looking at proposing something that, you know, potentially could limit the off-street parking on the private property, so how does that kind of all play and work? Does it change, you know, moving forward, that's something I think we may have to talk about.
Okay.
Just wanna have the whole conversations, we don't miss the other missing pieces or things we discussed previously, so.
Okay, so, just work with.
Well, so what we're looking for tonight would be to approve this amendment to the liquor license.
Okay.
And then I think, obviously, once the roundabout's done, we can sort of maybe take a look at what configuration of, of extension of trail connection would be best. I mean, to me, the ideal thing would be to bring the actual off-street trail along the south side of 34 and connect it into the roundabout. I mean, that would make the most sense to me, because it looks like we have enough round, you know, we have a plan right-of-way with the county there. But it may be that we have to do something else temporarily on the street.
Okay. All right. All right.
Does putting the trail on the street impact whether or not the county is willing to allow Scott to use part of that right-of-way for parking?
The county's just not gonna care, they're gonna say, figure it out with your private business. They've been relatively open to say whatever the city wants, they just didn't want any added maintenance costs, it's what, what we talked about, do we add physical barricades out on 34, and the maintenance issues, we kinda wanted to keep it simple. That led us to the, ultimately gonna be a bike in both directions with no vertholans, no bollards, no jersey barriers, concrete bars, et cetera, so that's kind of where, where I think this was going.
Yeah.
Not as good as a trail from a pedestrian walking perspective, but still added some value, because people are using it now, so. Actually giving the better is kind of what I was hearing at our last planning meeting, so. I think second could be a attractive parking area, because there's not gonna be a lot of traffic, obviously once we're normal operations and the roundabout's open, and 57's open, but if the business is using 34, I think that's gotta be part of the decision on both parties, so. But I don't think at the end of the day, the county's gonna care, really. They're just gonna say, build it safe and build it right, and do what you want, it's in town, just make sure the roads are open for county traffic, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
If we were to change, do we have to put any stipulation in there on the barricades for the, for his patio and the liquor light, or? No, actually, the state doesn't require those. That's right. It's, it has to be delineated, I think he's doing that with a light, with lights right now. But other than that, they actually, and Linda brought it, she put it pretty succinctly, the state said, you know, they don't want somebody running back into a building that's on fire to get out of the building that's on fire, so. And that makes a lot of sense, so.
That makes sense. Okay, any other questions? Entertain a motion to approve the request to amend the liquor license.
Make the motion.
Thanks Ryan, do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Number two, event permit for Cass and Fire Relief Annual Festival Dance. Uh, this is a little bit of a change, because the fire hall is gonna be, being demolished, they're gonna have that at the Legion property, and you have the map there, so we just have to be able to approve that. Are there any questions?
Yeah, originally they had been working, they had wanted to close Main Street, and I, I talked to Joe and to Chris Selgin, and I kind of discouraged them from that, just because I think that, that we've had Main Street closed a lot already, and especially if the movie theater is up and running, I mean, I don't wanna impact them more than we have to, so. They submitted this revised plan where they're asking to close the side street there in front of the Legion, which I think should be adequate number of space for them, so.
And if the road construction project's not done by then, we don't wanna have Main Street closed either.
Yeah, I don't wanna think about that, but yes, absolutely.
Just saying. And then the only thing is, I mean, where it's at before, there's noise, obviously, right, and people are used to that at that time. But they may wanna let the people know that live in that apartment right across the street, because there's already been complaints about the Legion having things in the evening from a few residents there that call the police department pretty regularly, whenever they hear noise, so. Just let them know that this was approved, and please don't call the police.
Yeah, I mean, I think that I'll, I'll ask Joe to communicate with the apartment complex, and we can follow up with them too.
Okay.
Yeah, that may be, I'm sure that'll be an issue. Yeah, hopefully it's just one night, and, you know, people will have to get through it, so.
Yep, okay. Any other questions, comments?
It's that night, but it's also Sunday afternoon as well, isn't it? Are they planning to do the?
Uh, as far as I know, yes.
The noise ordinance only goes till 10.
This is Sunday, from noon to 6.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so the noise ordinance is probably what we have to do later, yeah, okay.
All right, anything else? Entertain a motion to approve.
Make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Uh, we added number three, the Sinwell Lot Split.
So this is at 104 Fourth Ave Northeast, and what Mr. Sinwell would like to do is split his lot into three different lots. So it was originally platted as three lots, but somewhere between when it was platted and today, he joined the lots for taxation purposes. But now what he would like to do is construct some residential uses, his, his house is kind of in the middle there, so it would be lot two. But what he wants to do is add residential uses on one and three, would be after the lot split. And so I reviewed them according to the applicable standards for sizes and building line and street line and all of that. And I found that what's proposed in these third side surveys is that they're, they're, what he's proposing is in line with what the standards.
Okay. Any questions?
Is he recutting them the exact same way they are on the original plat, or is that changing at all with the new survey?
Yeah, the lines are the same, but it seems like the, some of the survey angles are kind of different.
So I think those original ones were 72-foot, weren't they?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've got the exhibits listed with the resolution there.
Any questions for Ian? Okay, hearing none, entertain a motion to approve. I'll make the motion.
Thanks Paul, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan. All in favor, state aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Thanks Ian. Administrator's report.
Okay, we've got a couple things tonight, so I'll go through my report first. Uh, let's see here. Planning and zoning, we've talked about most of that already. We've got the post board adopting some new rules there, so, as you know, there have been some difficulty in hiring officers, and I hope that these rules don't increase that difficulty for, for small departments like ours throughout the state, but there, especially, it sounds like disclosure of social media accounts, applicants gonna have to consent and disclose all accounts, so I'm not sure how that'll work, but and hopefully it'll improve the, the police service in Minnesota. Included tonight, we talked about the marijuana timeline, so our goal is to, to have the city side of things covered well before the state authorizes those permits, so I mean, that's, that's certainly the goal. The groundbreaking ceremony, we have some materials I included in the packet there, so you can take a look at those. We're expecting to have some of that stuff, mostly electronically, we're not planning on budgeting much for this, but we would like to see if we can have a good, a good attendance for that, so we're, if those dates absolutely don't work for, for you, let me know, because we'd like to have a good, you know, presence there for the groundbreaking in early August. It sounds like it's gonna be kind of a fun event for, for folks, and certainly we're gonna try and get some good, good positive coverage out of this, so. The chamber hosted the event, Roundabout Cass, and last week, I attended and, and I got to go to one of the ribbon cuttings that was up there too, so it's always great to see new businesses, especially in Main Street. It'll, it'll lead interestingly into what Ian's working on this summer with his parking. It's good to have a parking problem when we have enough businesses that are, you know, needing more spots. It wasn't quite as well-tended as last year, but it sounded like it was steady throughout the afternoon from what the chamber tells me. And then tonight, we'll have the, talk about the work from home policy, hopefully we can finalize that tonight. Then there are a couple other items in your packet, a couple items we discussed previously. As you're aware, the, the county has requested to detach that property up in the northwest part of the city, so including that, Jim sent down a detachment agreement that would allow us to serve those properties with sewer and water if a building does get built at some point in the future, so I think that's, that's a beneficial thing, so. Basically, what I'm looking for is approval of that agreement that's included in your packet tonight, as well as the resolution there with the, the detachment.
Any questions on that resolution that came from the county? Like, for me, it covered everything we needed, we're, we have the usements, we have the ability to serve that area.
Yep.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion.
Thanks Ryan, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Thanks Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution passes. And you got some sample.
Yeah, some sample PR material, so we'll just, just wanna let you know that's coming. I did have one other thing I wanted to just talk about. It was, just wanted to see council's feedback on it, we had a We had a person who owns a building on Main Street. Their upstairs tenant, I guess, had a, thought there was a carbon monoxide issue, so the fire department was dispatched, and the chief shared with me the components of that call, so the billing and that sort of thing, and the landlord, the owner of the building, is probably going to get stuck with the bill because the tenant isn't going to pay it. And that landlord's asking that we waive the bill. I know in the past, we haven't typically done that, but I let the landlord know that I would bring it to council and see if we wanted to make any changes to that policy or not. In this case, it was not founded, it was unfounded, carbon monoxide. The tenant felt faint, and they, she had turned on apparently a carbon monoxide detector that was outdated, and it tested positive. The police department responded, or the fire department responded. They went and tested it, and it wasn't, you know, testing positive. So, you know, realistically, you know, I think the fire department documented all the things they did, so I think the charges are justifiable, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that I, you know, to see where council's at with it. In the past, there's been sort of a mixed bag. When my predecessor was here, she would waive these charges occasionally, and I haven't done that since I've been here, but I wanted to make sure that council, you know, was providing some clarification on what you want to do with it.
That's a tough one. For myself personally, my opinion, we can't, just because when the trucks roll and the first responders respond, I mean, we're charged for insurance and everything else in that same call. My opinion, we can't, but that's my opinion. We can take it with his opinion.
What kind of money are we talking about?
Uh, it's five hundred and twenty dollars.
For a carbon monoxide?
For a call. I mean, they responded.
Per person, truck, or vehicle that goes, there's a kind of a set charge. If one truck goes, it's X amount of dollars, and if three people are on it, it's X amount of dollars, whatever it is, so.
These people are giving up their time, and the city's got expense.
Fire department has made carbon monoxide monitors available to renters in the past, so the renter or the landlord could have had a functioning, in-date, carbon monoxide detector on premise, which would have alleviated the whole thing.
Well, and I don't know.
But we don't want to discourage people from calling because they don't want to pay a fee.
But you have homeowner's insurance or renters' insurance that usually covers any kind of medical fire calls, not medical, but any fire call, and this was a fire call.
Yeah, without deductible?
Yeah, because you're paying a sub line on your insurance for that. Everybody pays it. You can adjust how much coverage you got, which most insurance companies recommend you go higher because it is more expensive nowadays, but a five hundred dollar bill fits in most insurance.
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest issue is that typically, I mean, if it was a bill in arrears, which this is, you know, we would go after the tenant because they're the ones who made the call. In this case, you know, and I spoke with the landlord, I said, you know, we can put it on revenue recapture for up to a year, you know, before we would actually have to assess it to the taxes, because obviously landlord's the one paying taxes and doesn't want to pay the bill. And, you know, he kind of equivocated, and I don't think that he had the information that you need to put into revenue recapture, which is, you need to have their social security number, because it, you know, if they're going through and, you know, getting a tax return or something like that, the state flags it. And we do that with the utility bills. We actually change the utility billing format so that electrical charges, as well as water and sewer, could be assessed back to the actual, you know, person and the landlord versus just one or the other, because, you know, obviously, we don't want to stick the landlord with it. But I just think it's important to be consistent, and, you know, it's certainly up to council, though, you know, in the long run, there is a cost because we did deploy. You know, if it's a false alarm, you know, and they get called off, typically, we don't charge for those. In fact, we've had a couple where it was like the hotel, like something went haywire, and they went in there and they said, oh, it's just an electrical fault. In this case, somebody actually tested and called, and they responded, and so anyways, we're not going to make a decision on it tonight, but I wanted to bring it to you, see if you have any thoughts on it, and certainly, maybe at our next meeting, if you've got any more feedback, I'd appreciate it then, because I think it would be good for us to, you know, have one policy and kind of be consistent with it for all the residents.
As part of the risk you run as a renter is, are your tenants paying the bills?
In this case, you know, the landlord indicated that tenant that was there is no longer there, so, I mean, it also behooves landlords to do a good job with their tenants in terms of making sure that they're having the proper information so that they can go after them if there isn't a rearier bill like that, so. But that's beside the point. So anyways, if you can give me some feedback, or what I'll do is, too, I'll email out the information I have from Joe and from Amy Handback of the PD related to the building and also the cost and that sort of thing, and you can take a look at that as well.
Okay, thanks, Tim. In your report, you want to just give us an update on the construction?
Absolutely.
Time lines, give us the date it'll be done.
About a minute, or?
Just a day.
I'll close with that if you're asking about fifty-seven. Obviously, I'll just go through the list, quick update, nothing formal tonight. Just so you guys know, we are starting the bonding bill, you know, that was, we talked about last meeting. Half of that was that flood control project, half it's reconstruction of southwest Casson, so internally, we started some discussion on permitting and how that's going to go because that's going to be the most difficult item we're going to have to deal with and how we're going to set that schedule of that project, so. We got that out there, and then also talking to Mike Bobani and the financial stuff and how we're going to fund it and whatnot, so we're having that conversation, so staff will be working on that, just as FYI. The sewer, INI Reduction Project, that's sealing up some of our sewer, the casting replacement, some spot repairs and some lining of the sewer. We're wrapping that project up for kind of a fall into spring project. We got some work we got to do on the highways that have detours out, so we're just kind of waiting for things to clear up there, so we're working on that. Tower, electrical next week, they're going to do some restoration before the fair, so that'll be kind of all good to go by the fair, and they'll take down the old tower after the fair. We don't need them taking down stuff when they're trying to get that pit gate, so that's the schedule on the tower. Veil, we got paved today, so I think they're hydroseated by the end of the week, so that'll be done, but we got the apartment in there and open, and that was a little tough to get done, but we got it, and it's getting paved today, or was paved today. Safe for outside schools, so we got to wrap up Sixteenth Street and Fifth Street, so we're not going to close that intersection, we're just going to reduce some of the curb lines and pet ramps there, so that'll still be open and everything, we'll be able to get through there, but we need to get that done here, so that's going to happen soon. They're going to move the crew from Byron on Highway fourteen there, so as soon as that, our cuts done, they're going to finish that up, so that's wrapping up on our side of things. Fifty-seven, the roundabout, Tim mentioned we were at the chamber meeting, just had a booth there with MINDOT. MINDOT staff was actually up at the school that day, teaching the driver's ed kids, driver's ed's class, and the kids on how to drive through roundabouts, so I thought that was good to MINDOT to reach out to the school and talk to roundabouts the kids on how to drive through them, so. We've been telling people, early April is what the contractors talked about with MINDOT.
Early April.
I'm sorry, early August, excuse me.
That's a long time.
Yeah, it is a long time, so. Early August on finishing up fifty-seven, so that's a date that's been out there. I don't think MINDOT and the contractor worked on anything officially. You know, they did start it, April first start date was the plan, and I think by the time load restrictions got off, I think there was a couple, maybe even three weeks by the time they got started with load restrictions.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, so it was a while, so they're talking about that and just continuing moving on. The sewer, I think, is done, along with all the services, there's like one water service to put in, and then all the, our utilities will be done, and then they'll start on, they have started on storm sewer, get the storm sewer in, and they're going to start cutting the road. The roundabout is on schedule moving forward. Mr. Shutey is working out, potentially putting a service in along with QuickTrip, so we're working through that and kind of integrating that in, so we're trying to accommodate the future growth in the area and kind of working all in the same area and same sandbox there, so. That's what I have for that. One other thing, Stagecoach Trail, we talked about it again at the workshop. Tim and I are going to be setting up a call with City of Byron, they're looking at the Stagecoach Trail and interested in connecting Oxbow to the City of Byron and Byron into Casson, so, and then maybe Oxbow even into Douglas Trail, so that is the plan of the Stagecoach Trail, which is a DNR-accepted regional plan or trail plan that they have kind of on the books, but it's been sitting there, and when we've previously talked to the DNR, was this needs to be a city pushed issue with the DNR to get the funding, so. Not spending any money yet, but Byron's interested in having that conversation, so Tim and I are going to be talking to them and potentially talking to the DNR and formally how things could move forward and potential action for the council in the future, so. I just Googled, mapped it, it's about six miles to Oxbow Park, so I think it'd be a cool amenity for the town, and obviously, manor will be connected in because our trails connect to them, so it'd be cool, be a little bit of a hike for young kids, but nice to have that option, and.
I think for the bikers, it certainly would be something that would be very interesting, and we have a lot of folks who do bike, and just seeing the trail usage is really spiking, so that's good.
Absolutely. I think it'd be a great asset to the community, so. Again, nothing, just giving you guys a heads up, keep you guys on loop, that's been discussed, so. Questions? That was all I had.
So just to be clear, to clear up the rumor that's going around town, the state did not mismeasure and doesn't have to put a stoplight back in, the roundabout will fit at Main Street.
Yeah, it's going to fit, yeah.
I heard that at church last week, yeah.
Oh, it's, there's a lot of people, I heard the state mismeasured, and they can't fix it down, whatever, okay?
It's going to be a small, little roundabout, but it'll be, it's fine.
Meaning.
Thanks, thanks, Brian, appreciate it. Personnel, we have recommendation to hire probationary firefighters, Dayton Peterson and Levi Roline, so we'll take that recommendation from the fire chief, and I will entertain a motion to approve that.
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and thanks to Dayton and Levi for joining the department. The pilot, number two pilot, flexible work policy. Tim?
So, including your packet, we have, I think, hashed this one maybe to death, but we've got this final draft, and there's some red line changes based on feedback we received from the department heads, and there's a council action sheet, I think the city clerk also forwarded out some information to you last week on responses. Generally, most department heads did not feel they would be able to utilize it, and I think we kind of knew that, but it was good to hear from them what their thoughts were, so we got the, some of them were somewhat sarcastic, but I still appreciate the feedback, and we've got some really good staff people, so I always have to remember that. But the, basically, I mean, I think it'll give us some flexibility. It, you know, one thing I want to highlight is interesting, and I mean, it's just very clear, flexible work arrangements may not be possible for some positions, so it just is, some positions just this will never apply to. And we also think that, you know, it may be utilized primarily, you know, for office staff. I know Charlie said that he was not interested in doing pop works from home, he'd much rather be in the truck or something like that, but anyway, so you've got this copy here with the changes that have been made to eliminate some of the non-exempt, because that didn't seem like it was going to be feasible either with the notes that the clerks added there. And then I did add in, based on the recommendation from the city attorney, that ergonomics guide, so that your last page there was the ergonomics guide from the league. So I'm hoping we, if possible, if the council has any other actions or changes they want to make, we can do those, otherwise, we're looking for approval tonight.
Okay, any questions for Tim? Comments?
Did you look at, like, in Rochester, they only made it till they can only do it on a Wednesday from work from home, because part of their concern was that people were going to work from home on a Friday or Monday to extend their weekend and say they were working from home, so.
Yeah, and I think the final, what it all comes down to is, it'll be case-by-case basis, and it'll be based on the needs of the workflow and what's best for the city. I think that's really my goal, and that may mean that it, something like a Wednesday makes sense, and it may mean that, you know, it ends up being a different day of the week. You know, one thing we know that it won't be all the employees, obviously, because we have to still be making sure with the small staff that everything's adequately staffed, so I think that that's, you know, the biggest takeaway I have is that it'll definitely vary depending on the situation.
And it is a pilot, so if we approve that, then it can, you know, it's a work in progress, it can be changing at any time, so.
That's right. If things aren't working, we'll certainly bring that back to council.
Make changes as we go.
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Mel. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Thanks, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. On to the attorney. We have a closed session for possible land transaction, is that going to be recorded?
Yeah. Hey, Chris? Yes. Can I get a question here to Brian before we kick him out? Yep, absolutely. Yep. I was looking at the department head meeting reports and the flow amounts for what we pumped out of wells versus what we treated, and for the last three reports, the amount we've been treating at the treatment plant's been increasing, but the pumping has been staying relatively flat. Is there a reason for that?
Well, so, what we pump, we have some water that is irrigated, right, that doesn't go back in the sewer, so that'd be a net out of the water system, which I'm assuming we're going to experience that here this month. And then the other thing would be INI, right, so it comes out of your faucet, it's metered, so it's accounted for, so that would be in the pumping record, and then it goes into the sanitary sewer, then obviously goes to the treatment plant. If there's any leakage that INI, we talked about, we talked about the INI Reduction Project, that's why we'd have water that is larger amount treated than what is pumped out of the wells.
Yeah, so this month, it says.
Coming into, you know, spring thaw, it's always low, and then when it rains, it obviously peaks, so our treatment plant experiences, you know, four or five times the amount in a large rain event than when it went on a normal day, so I'd have to look at the record and see why it'd be increasing now, because it should be decreasing with the irrigation.
Well, that's.
Pumping's going to be up, and then it's been dry, so our, you know, our groundwater isn't there, right, because it's drying out.
Yeah, so this last one from May says they treated forty-six million gallons, and the prior month, they treated thirty-five million gallons, and the month prior to that, they only treated twenty million gallons. And obviously, like you said, there was a thaw probably in there.
Spring thaw, yeah.
But the point of the INI, I think, is supposed to be preventing that thaw from getting into the treatment plant, and it's kind of going, it's looking really bad in the wrong direction right now.
Yeah, I, so I don't think that was the case, because I know the treatment plant guys had alluded to that, they thought that the INI and the peaks during the wet times was getting better than it was before.
Okay, because I, in the last two months, we've doubled how much the treatment plant has been treating, and they've only increased, you know, maybe twenty percent on how much they pumped out of the wells.
Yeah, I mean, one question I'd have, and I don't know, would be year over year, so I mean, what I, I think what maybe what we could do is, because it, you know, February,[1552.78] So I mean, what I, I think what maybe what we could do is, because it, you know, February, March, April, you know, they're all going to be different, right? But seeing what we did last year at the same time, and obviously weather has an impact. But that's something we can probably get from Dave too and maybe that's what we need to do, Brandon, is just checking.
So I'd just like to see, see some results from this INI project because just looking at the last three months, it doesn't look like it's doing very well.
The numbers are very strange this next month, partly because we have a ton of water being pumped. I mean, that number should drop because people are pumping a ton of water, but then I know the irrigation in town has been huge. You know, so I mean, frankly, it'll be a good month for the water utility as long as we have water.
So the aquatic center was filled, right?
Right.
And then obviously, there's not been any rain, so people have been watering their yard. So we would expect the amount of water pumped should go up, but the wastewater should stay flat.
Yeah, I mean, so these numbers, I mean, so I would expect this next report probably to be closer than this one is.
Okay.
But like I said, it's all about year over year, not month to month because it's all going to vary.
Yeah.
Look at, we had probably our second or third snowiest winter ever. So we had more breakup this year. And we did have a little bit of rain in April and first part of May.
Really spring.
It might have been that extra snowpack or frost. So, I mean, I see compared to last year. Yeah, no, I mean, I think that's really interesting. Is it year to year, is it getting better? So every, actually every day, they calculate how much while they're actually graph. But they report every day how much they treat and pump. So I mean, they have the records, so we can go back for a long, as long as we need to, to go back and look at records. A lot of times, they'll plant, plot years together over months. And then you can see spring thaw and then July 2019, it would have went up over that month because of the flooding that we received and you can watch it. And then the winter, we kind of level out and bottom out in the winter with respect to flood the treatment plant. And then water use obviously peaks in the summer, so we can correlate that back to previous years and start looking at. It might be interesting to see, so. I think, I mean, some of the INI, you know, program that we have, a lot of the deficiencies haven't quite been completed yet. I don't know, I'd have to look at those percentage of non-compliant houses. The bigger fixes had a year to fix them, so that they were just inspected, you know, they may not have been done yet or they're going to be done. I think we were at like 90. Or the inspections, but the ones that were non-compliant, 10% of those. Some were some pumps that had 30, 60 days to get done, I think it was 30 days. But if you had to dig up your yard, you had, you had a whole year. So there's a little bit of a lag there, so as we do these, you're going to eventually see it. In addition, that was on the private side, right? Which accounts for a fair amount, but it's kind of the easiest to get out and most cost effective. As I mentioned, so the INI project and doing that is going to help too. We're going to line some sewer, we're going to do some spot repairs. We're worried about sewer collapsing and then replacing a ton of manholes through town. We're then open pick holes, so if you drive up and see the open pick holes where water can get in. So we're going to replace some castings in the drainage way that feeds into Mastin Creek. We've seen all the backups, the northwest part of town that's newer, we've kind of left that alone because we can deal with that. We haven't any problems or less problems up there than we have along the Mastin Creek drainage way. And if you remember our growth area, and we're going to talk about some growth here in a bit, that area to the south and east that is kind of right for growth, all drains to that same sewer. So we want to get that sewer out and those peaks out when it rains and it's wet in the spring, so we're not surcharging into our basement. So to your point, start looking at that and plot some of that stuff out and see what it looks like.
I mean, I will say one thing that I noticed and Dave and I've talked about this before. The first year I was here, we had a 32% water loss. And last year, we were able to get that down to 14%. So we've managed to halve the water loss, which is really good. And my goal obviously is to get into single digits. And I think with the Main Street project, we might be able to do that because it'll, it'll help with a lot of our water leaks. But yeah, why don't we take a look?
And I'm not sure how water loss works in the pump. So what he's referring is water, the water loss, which is not a sewer thing, right?
It's how much you pump versus how much you build, right?
How much you build, yep. So we have, like, we back out a lot of times like flushing hydrants, but if our mains are leaking or if we have, yeah, just other water, water loss that's not accounted for and that we don't build. So that's somewhat related, we'll have to look into how that works out. And I don't know that they're reporting, are they just reporting their actual wells, right? Yeah, from the well, so the water loss probably is not part of that conversation, so.
So is that something we can expect in an upcoming meeting, we can get kind of a report on how we're doing?
It's not a problem.
I don't know if that's something from you or Charlie would have to do.
How it works, we had, you know, we do wastewater treatment plants, we get that information from them.
And I can get you the monthly report too. I mean, I get a copy of that from day or a month on how much they pump each day and the water they've received, like the rainfall.